Hi Beth. I'm good, how are you?
Good.
Oh, where's the sign sheet?
Uh, it's taken the wrong spot. It's there around the top. Did I sip it in there somewhere behind it?
Let me look. Yep, there it is.
I'm making them work for it.
Um, you guys?
I'm ready. It's on. Becky's is on.
I'm gonna call the meeting to order at, uh, seven o'clock. Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
Uh, I'll leave this time. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I'm gonna slide this mask to the side so I can see and not fog up. Okay, um, I need to call roll call.
Here.
Robert.
Here.
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 Here. I de- I declare we have a quorum. Um, approve the, can I get a motion to approve the minutes?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, new business. Approve resolution twenty twenty ten B twenty twenty-one budget.
We've all had the budget a couple months now, but just as a recap, the total budget that we're trying to approve tonight is two million nine hundred thirty-six thousand eight hundred eighty-eight dollars, um, of which the general fund is one million nine hundred thirty-one dollars, nine, nine hundred thirty-four thirty-one dollars. Um, local road straight is fifty. Um, MBA, our local vehicle highway, is quarter ninety-one, four thirteen. The park is three hundred twenty-two, six fifty-seven. And, uh, cumulative capital is twenty-three-five and the CCD, which is thirty-six thousand. Our maximum levy, um, is one million two hundred twenty-seven thousand eight hundred sixty-two. And our home base tax caps are about two hundred forty-two and seventy dollars. Um, keep in mind, um, the overall budget is only going up about one point nine percent. Um, also I have allowed for in this budget because of the new fire territory. We estimate the decrease in revenue of about a hundred sixty-eight thousand, but I've allowed for two hundred just for cushion, just to make sure that we're covered on that. Um, there really isn't anything else. I mean, we've gone over these all times. I'm not having questions. I don't know whether the meetings tonight are worth the approval.
Any questions?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna sign right here and pass it around.
Make a motion. Make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty dash ten B.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you. Okay. Counsel to consider request by Justin Litchel?
Litchley.
Litchley? Okay. Uh, residents at three oh one West Church Street to allow chickens to be kept on their property in the accordance with the procedure outlined in the town code section ninety-three twenty. You wanna come on up to the microphone?
Do you guys have a copy of the letter I've sent?
Yes.
Yeah, um, basically it's pretty straightforward. My wife and I have lived in town for about three years. Um, we really like it here. We wanna raise our boys here, homeschool them, and, uh, we like to garden and, uh, yeah, we'd just like to have some chickens in our backyard.
We have, um, point eight, seven acres, so we're on Church Street. We don't have any neighbors bordering us. It's just the park on the left and then a street and then a home and then the apartments and back and the apartments up front. Um, we followed everything and sent out letters, delivered them to our neighbors, um, mailed out the ones who were renters, so we mailed it to the owners and everything.
They were right, right.
Um, and, you know, as far as we know, I don't know if anybody's here, but everybody was fine with it. Um, but yeah, we just, I have like a passion for homeschooling and I was raised on a farm, actually, like on the border of Pendleton and Fortville. Um, and so, yeah, we would just love if we could use it as a benefit for gardening, um, as well. I mean, you know, a little bit more than that than I do, but we garden a lot too because I have a lot of, yeah, just digestive stuff and, and growing our own food is easier for me than purchasing things. It tends to just bother me less than we would love to, yeah, be able to raise them and talk about.
And just as far as the regulations, basically?
Yeah.
Um, I copied five points, basically just straight out of Indianapolis's, um, bullet points of kind of what they recommend for, for like, you know, just regulations of, you know, maximum number of twelve adult hens, no roosters, you know, just to limit the noise. Um, because hens really are, are pretty quiet. Um, you know, the, the exercise area would not be in the front yard. Um, reasonable care must be afforded, clean water always present.
Basically that will keep everything clean and quiet and it be in our backyard, probably far into our backyard, which kind of borders the creek. Um, and just kind of near where the garden is so they can lose the process.
Provide compost and bug control and.
Okay. All right, um. Uh, who wants to start? Cause, uh, that, there is a lot of questions, cause this came up, uh, you probably heard about, about eight years ago and there was.
I didn't. I, we've only lived here.
Yeah, about three, um.
Yeah, give them the history of it, like.
Oh, a little bit of it, yeah. Um, what I wanted to do, if it's all right with people, I have not, like I, this is like the, like the first day I've kinda even looked at it. I would like to table this so I can at least, you have some neighbors that have signed a petition that they don't want the chickens.
Oh, okay.
Um, that I guess they just had it passed around. Did you know, see this?
I saw it.
Okay. Um, that's why I wanna make sure, cause I wanna give people time to weigh in on this.
Yes.
Um, because if we allow there, then another person, another person, then another person. And, um, I think too, we wanna think about it for a while to see where the, if we do decide to do something, it would be to, you know, look at the ordinances and and what Carmel or Indianapolis and what kind of regulations they put in there. Um, do you mind coming back in two weeks?
No, we can do that, yeah.
And we will, all of us will, uh, weigh in on it and decide and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Well, it's really nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
And, uh, I'll see you in a couple of weeks, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Joe, need to say that we just tabled this and. Make a motion. I make a motion that we table this for two weeks.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, counsel to consider resolution number twenty twenty C ten C regarding CARES Act funding. Um, either one of you guys wanna talk about it? She's not here.
She's not here, but pretty much, uh, this is coming to the public situation where we were, the town was able to repay us to, I think, a hundred thirty-two thousand dollars, uh, with, uh, the revenues that we paid out for, um, police department and some of the other, you know, folks that, uh, that we qualify for pretty much the full amount. So we tabled each other in front of you so we can submit that to you in virtual.
Okay. And we need signatures. I've already signed it. I'll pass it down this way. Joe, can I get a motion that we consider resolution?
I'll make a motion to consider, uh, resolution twenty twenty dash ten C regarding CARES Act funding.
Second.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, that's me. We're moving right along now. Appointment of the police commission members. Um, two weeks ago, I sat down and I wanted to interview the, the gentleman before, but there was no ladies that applied, but, um, I enjoyed doing that, uh, getting to know the people in front of you, to ask them questions rather than just voting off a piece of paper. It, um, it was a learning experience for myself and, um, I made the choice of Kurt. Let me see here, uh, make sure Kurt Robbins, yeah, Kirk Clarkson. Kirk Clarkson is gonna be on the... Oh, there you are. All right, come on up. Come on up. Well, he's got a mask on. I wanna introduce everybody to Kirk Clarkson.
Or Nick.
Nick.
Nick, 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 Nick.
Well, your name has changed.
That's all right. If that's part of the, uh, application, that's okay. We can change names.
I'm sorry. It's okay. Yeah.
I'm gonna spell it N I C K, but.
Sorry, 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 sorry.
That's all right. Fritz and council members, thank you so much for, uh, having me, uh, first of all, interview. That was a great process and I learned a lot about the board as well. And then just speaking with each of you, uh, man, a lot of pride in this town and I'm happy to live here. Uh, a little bit about myself, I, uh, grew up at Mount Comfort area and, uh, I was a Mount Comfort kid, a Mount Vernon Middle School kid, a high school kid and got some deep roots and a lot of family around here and, uh, I've loved Fortville since I was born and, uh, we still all kinda live around this area and it's just good to see a, a lot of culture still there that I grew up with. And that's what I'm, I'm happy to hopefully be a part of that and keep moving it forward with you guys. And whatever I can do to help on the police commission and, uh, making this town as great as it can be as we move forward in the future. Um, I also have three little kids, uh, and my wonderful wife, we live right over there in Colonial Village and I take them on little runs through town and I just love seeing everybody out and business and just things going how it should go. And, uh, it does my heart good that, uh, you guys come in here and grind it out and try to get the issues down to keep all that positive energy and stuff going. Anyway, that's my little spiel. I don't know if you guys have any questions for me or? No?
I talked to you at the last meeting, I believe.
Yeah. I appreciate that.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thanks for volunteering.
Do we need a motion on that? Alex?
No, it's, uh, it's Chris's.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. All right, uh, second on unfinished business. Counsel to consider taking action on the resolution number twenty twenty ten A regarding a financial plan for voluntary annexac- annexation of approximately a hundred and twelve acres at the northeast corner of Fortville Pike and County Road West eight fifty north owned by Byers Farm LLC.
All right. Good evening. For the record, I'm Adam Zachlikowski, the planning and building director for the town. Um, this was an item that was carried over from our last meeting. Um, it's a voluntary annexation. The, the, uh, property owner would still like to move forward with annexing the property voluntarily into the town, although the zoning isn't going through. And so, under state law, even for voluntary annexations, we have to prepare, uh, what's called a fiscal plan. There's a number of different criteria outlined in state law that we need to follow. And so, um, we still kept the fiscal plan the same. Um, from the standpoint of it, it assumes that the property could be developed into a neighborhood at some point, so I still think there's a reasonable likelihood of that happening at some point. It's just who the builder is. Um, so with that, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to address those. Thank you.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
Make a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty dash ten A fiscal plan for voluntary annexation of approximately a hundred and twelve acres at the northeast corner of Fortville Pike and County Road eight fifty north.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, uh, third on the agenda is counsel to consider holding second reading, final reading of ordinance number twenty twenty five B regarding voluntary annexation of land owned by Byers Farm LLC.
All right, so this second item is the actual ordinance itself. Uh, this would be second and final reading, um, if you're willing to hold that. Um, of course, we conducted a public hearing. We had first reading. Um, you had just approved the fiscal plan in accordance with the law. Um, so this annexation, uh, if you were to adopt it here tonight would go into effect after we record the ordinance with the county. We have to publish it in the paper and then we've gotta wait uh, thirty days. So sometime in November, if you approve it here tonight is when it would actually become a part of our town limits. So with that, if you have any questions, be happy to address those.
Is there any questions? I forgot to ask if there's anybody in the audience that had a question or, okay. Go ahead and make a res-.
Make a motion to approve ordinance twenty twenty dash five B, an ordinance of the town council of the town of Fortville annexing certain territory to the town of Fortville, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the town of Fortville.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, uh, reports, town manager, Joe Renner.
You know, I only got a couple items to bring.
I did, didn't I?
Another one.
Oh. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You know, the council approved to, uh, not do shut offs in terms of late fees and all sorts of water utility bills during the COVID phase that you're going through. We also approved the payment plan that is going to include, once we start it back up, which we've been this month, wherever the current bill we do and then previous would be, previous balance would be divided by six. And then we would add that start the next six months if it's not, we can do that. Um, our billing software company, um, had to create a module for that. And they had gotten to us, but unfortunately they got it to us later. And we've got all the billing and stuff up now, so it's too late to incorporate that for this month. So that will actually be taking effect next month.
Okay.
Just wanted to let you know what's going on with that. And then the other thing I've got is, uh, in fact, you know, we've done the RFUs for the engineers, uh, to interview engineering firms for the water treatment plant. Um, we've gotten a few of those. I know Robert's looked through. And I've been looking through them with Dave has. We just need to set up, uh, time that we can do some interviews with a few of those select engineering firms. And we'll be doing that and coming back to your council. In the future, a recommendation on that.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Joe? No? Okay, thank you. Uh, park manager, Heath.
Heath Luther Parks manager, for the record. Uh, don't have much. Wanted to give a couple of quick updates. Uh, the dog park is up to fifty-two applicants, um, which at this point, time minimum has brought us about a little over two thousand dollars, um, which we're gonna put right back in, obviously, through, uh, continued upgrades and things like that. So we're off to, frankly, I was gonna be happy with forty this year and we're above that as of now. So, um, election's going on right now at the community center, as everybody knows. Um, that's kinda shut down. Things are going well over there. Um, I did wanna have a quick discussion about the fireworks. I know I brought it up previously. I don't know if you guys have had a chance to talk amongst yourselves yet or not, as far as kinda what, um, what we're looking at doing, but by, and I will be here at the next council meeting as well, but we need to kinda figure out how we wanna go about, um, the fourth of July, cause we, we will need to get that on the books if that's something we wanna do as far as fireworks are concerned, uh, moving forward. Um, the last thing that I have is I believe we're meeting again Wednesday at seven o'clock for the parks, kind of friends of the park, um, kind of volunteership that we're doing. Um, we had some pretty good interests. Uh, we met with Beth about doing a five oh one C three. Um, obviously this isn't going to be a town thing. This is going to be a separate, uh, five oh one C three, um, that, that will hopefully work with the parks department is the plan. So I don't know if Libby has anything to add with that, but.
No, I might have a layer that will do it pilot for us pro bono, so.
Yeah, so, I mean, that's kinda where it's at right now. I'm trying to kinda keep the town, I mean, again, it's, it's not, it's not going to be town affiliated, right? So it's going to be, um, separate from that, but obviously i- in organization that, that works with particularly the parks department. So that's all I've got. Anybody got any questions for me?
Any questions? I was looking up the fourth, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Okay. I was looking up when the fourth was next year. It's on Sunday.
Sunday.
Yeah.
Yep.
So, I mean, I say we go ahead and. Yeah, so it'd be the tenth. Man, I'm saying we go ahead and book it.
Have you talked to the?
Would we, would there be a reason why we wouldn't want to? I think we kinda just.
Well, has anybody talked to them about location? Because I know they really did not like landmark park. Do you think you can talk them into doing it?
I can have a conversation with Donnie for sure about different locations. That's something, we're kinda up in the air right now, right? Like, the school's been talked about, but with everything that's going on right now, they're not making any decisions about what's going on over there. Um.
They have been fire marshals.
Fire marshal, for sure. It, it's a distance thing, right? From the distance from buildings.
And now too much around.
Yeah, so, I mean, Memorial Park, because of the, and it's a good thing, but because of the kind of natural contours that we have in that park, it's very hard to kind of get fireworks with the mature trees and things like that. There's not a lot of parking. There's just, i- i- I know it used to happen down there back when it used to kinda be the amphitheater and the Babe Ruth Field and stuff like that, but it's grown to the point that I don't know that you could even get enough people down there, um, as opposed to, you know, kind of what it was back then. Um, there are definitely options. Um, I don't know what those look like. You know, maybe in the future, we've got some other space. Mount Vernon North, perhaps, those kinda areas. I, I don't know. Um, but for the time being, you know, the big thing is getting fireworks on the books if we're gonna do them. And then the next thing would be what that festival looks like. You know, and, and who, you know, if it's, it's a chamber thing, if it's a nothing. I, I, I don't know, but I've, that's something we need to kinda decide as a group here is, you know, we're just gonna do this and then piggyback off of, of what's going on, so.
And I think the fire marshal was concerned with the large mortars.
Mm-hmm.
I say. Say go ahead and get it on the books.
Yeah.
Worry about the, we, we got time to.
Find out the specifics too. What is, what, you know, what is that? Just like Joe said, what's that mean? If we, if we have it at landmark, what can we, is, you know, what are the limitations and? Or if we go out to the school, what can we do? What, what's the difference between the two?
Right.
Let's get some of that.
I'll get with Mark on that. Let me write that down.
And I'll talk to Donnie, um, who's.
With fireworks. Park was out, cause it did have two exits. It's only one way in.
Memorial.
One way out.
Memorial.
Memorial Park.
Okay, yeah. Okay. But, so as far as landmarks and sorta, what I can tell you is the only thing that changed on the fireworks display was the finale itself. Everything else was still permissible by the fire marshal. It was just the big mortars at the very end that had to be cut back a little bit. Now, the previous fire marshal obviously didn't have much of a concern with that, right? Uh, the, the new guy, um, and rightfully so, was trying to do what's right. So, um, that's kinda how we got to where we were this year. I think the biggest thing for us as a town is if we want to make this not just the fireworks, an actual town event, or if it's something that we're going to continue to kinda delegate to other people and not really be involved other than the sponsorship of the fireworks.
I think our goal was to make it a town event. I mean, that's, I think that's be the best, best thing for everybody, really.
I'm not disagreeing, but.
Try to get, try to get, and I've talked to, um, the chamber, haven't talked to FAI yet, but this COVID thing's made it hard for.
For sure.
FAI people are shut down, so it's kinda, I haven't called Jen yet, but I'm gonna call her still, but.
Okay.
I talked to the chamber, Ben, and he said that they didn't, didn't wanna do, you know, they didn't have interest in that. They're gonna try to cut back on the events that they have. That's really not their goal, where they think they should do. Huh? I'm sorry. Ben? Ben? Yeah, that's, he's the one that told me that, but I haven't talked to Phil or anybody, Pastor Phil or nothing. Yeah, it was just my conversation with Ben when I asked him about that.
So, a- and again, this isn't necessarily cutting out those entities. It's just figuring out how it can be, you know.
Everybody fits in, but it's, it's a town event and.
But I think it's short, we need to get the fireworks schedule correct for that Saturday. We'll figure out from there over the next X amount of months.
July the tenth.
July the tenth, yep.
Book it.
So, we'll get it booked. I will call him tomorrow. Any other questions for me?
What about the light at the basketball?
Uh, yes, so I have gotten, um, Musco, Musco is the, the big, uh, athletic field lighting, um, company. They work, uh, all over the place. I have the quote, I wanna say, and don't quote me exact, I wanna say it was twenty-eight thousand for the lights, the basketball court.
Wow, twenty-eight thousand.
Twenty-eight thousand, because the phases aren't right to be able to handle the new lights. The, when that was put in, the lights itself, those, you can't even get the lights that were up there anymore. Um, the best you could do were HID lights. Um, and it just, if, my feeling is, and this is kinda the way it was at the dog park too, if we're gonna do it, um, we need to do it properly and something that's going to last. Those are LEDs. Um, the neighbors would never know that they're on over there. Uh, would be the same concept of a push button, but the, the bigger issue for down there was the phase. It was, I think it's a, maybe a two-phase. I'd have to look exactly at it. It needs to be at least a three-phase for the new kind of lighting, the electrical that goes through. And so, there are some other electrical things that have to happen for us to be able to get lights down there, just sticking the poles back up, the old rotten wooden poles, you know, those type of things. We're basically putting a Band-Aid over a bolt hole at that point in time. I mean, we need to, if we're gonna do it, it needs to, to be done properly. Um, now, with that being said, my parks budget this year is looking pretty good. Um, I might have the ability to do some things like that. Um, it just depends on, on whether or not, you know, we deem that it's, you know, appropriate for us to be able to do, so.
Since that's really the only place for them to go in town now to play. I mean, I don't know where else you would go.
Right. And, and so I'm also getting quotes, just so everybody's aware, for fixing the lighting on the softball fields over there and actually getting proper lighting over there, because there is some money, if we're looking at revenue into the parks, there is some money being left on the table over there by not having lights that I could be able to host, um, adult leagues, weeknights, uh, we could host tournaments on the weekends. Um, that definitely, uh, we just, right now, from a, you know, lighting sample, we just can't do it. So, um, twenty-eight thousand, that's gonna be about the going rate for what I was looking at. It were basically two poles on each side, like there were, new metal poles with, um, LEDs and then a security light on it with a push button. So.
Anything anybody can pull off and?
What's that?
Anything anybody can pull off?
The, the, everything as we move forward is going to be vandal proof. As much as possible, correct. So.
Is this anything that, is this anything that, um, we need, like the young man who came up and asked for this to be done, offered, that maybe there was something he could do to help raise funds for it? Is that something that we?
We need to get him involved.
Do, or, yeah, get him involved somehow?
What I can tell you in, and I've had a conversation with Musco about this, they're kind of a sole source vendor. I know we typically go out to bed, but there are a lot of things with the state, although the chief does it with his police cars, things like that, that don't necessarily, because of the way that the state is set up, um, for this kinda thing. Um, it, it's all government pricing as far as they're concerned. They work with a lot of municipalities and a lot of school districts as far as lighting is concerned, so they, they kinda get it, but they're also a sole source vendor for this particular kind of LED. Um, I'm not saying we couldn't get it cheaper elsewhere. There's also twenty-five year warranties on all this stuff. Um, so, they're, I've been around a lot of baseball fields and Musco is the, the premier, like, lighting vendor for, from major league stadiums to soccer stadiums to foot, I mean, they do the Colts stadium all the way down to smaller parks departments. So, um, they're really good at what they do.
Okay.
Adam just reminded me, actually, I had a meeting here with Duke a couple of weeks ago and they reminded me that, that they do, do grants for some different things like that. So it might be somebody who might reach out to you as well. He might have something that we could utilize. We could.
So yes, I would say somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand to be able to get new lights up down there, cause it's all gonna have to be brand new and not rework with the old stuff.
I wonder if this kid though, that came in here, if he has a connection for lighting somewhere. What if you look at somebody that would have a use, you know, to be involved like that, that maybe would be interested in donating some of that?
Possibly.
Yeah.
Possibly. So, and I don't, I, frankly, I don't know this kid's name. If anybody's got any contact information, I could, I'd be more than happy to reach out to him.
The kid that come in about the basketball?
Yeah, it's on my, it's in my email.
Calling the kid, I can't remember his name.
I mean, he's, he's a kid. He's a high school student, so I get it. Um, yeah, I mean, if you've got contact information, I'll be more than happy to reach out to him and have a conversation with him. Um yeah, I mean, if you've got contact information, I'll be more happy to reach out to him and have a conversation with him, like I said.
To you.
So.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Uh chief.
Good evening. Uh Bill Kinar, chief police for the record. Uh I don't have anything really official, just a couple of, a couple of things I wanted to put out there. Uh first of all, I looked at our budget numbers uh for the remainder of the year. We're cutting off spending in my department uh at the end of October. It looks like we're probably gonna come in around twenty thousand uh anywhere between eighteen to twenty thousand dollars under budget this year, uh if everything holds true uh till the end of December. The other thing is uh I want to publicly recognize and thank Frank Caudell. Uh he's been a member of the Board of Police Commissioners since inception. We took on this responsibility and uh as you all know, he stepped down voluntarily. And we, I just want to publicly make sure that people know that we certainly appreciate his service to the community and and to the police department. He's been a very strong ally of the police department uh since I've been here, so, and I think he will continue to be, but I wanted to get it on the record that uh the police department certainly appreciates his service. And then I also wanted to welcome uh Nick, AKA Kurt, um to the Board of Police Commissioners and look forward to appreciate him stepping up and doing his civic responsibility to help move the police department forward. So that's all I've gotten, and you've got something for me.
Thank you. Town attorney, Alex?
I don't have anything which has questions for me.
Any questions? Nope. Alright, thank you. Uh public comment?
I think you skipped Adam.
Pardon me?
Adam, sorry, Adam.
Oh, shoot. Adam, come on, Adam, you got anything for us? I'm sorry. How did that happen?
That's alright. Um so there's no plant commission meeting this month, no cases for review. Um there will be a Board of Zoning Appeals K, uh meeting on Thursday, October twenty-ninth at six thirty. There'll be a couple of uh minor cases on that, so.
Okay, thank you. Alright, Paul, sorry about that.
Paul Cook, seven nineteen North Crystal Drive, Fortville. I want to, first, I want to thank Nick or Kirk, whoever he is, to the commission. But I do have a question. He's filling a position that, you know, I I don't know how long the term is left on Frank's position. Cause I, you know, I had to go through that. I filled.
Oh, okay.
So I I just wondered how long, how much longer.
Oh, um Joe, do you know what, how much Frank had left on his?
Two years.
So if, he's got two years. Okay, so it'll be a little while.
Let me know.
So he's up in twenty twenty-two?
I think, I can't, I can't. I'm not gonna tell you that, but I think that's what it is.
Okay. Well, we, we don't, we can look that up later, that's.
I try to keep those stuff handy.
Okay. Do we have any uh other public comment? Oh, Dave?
Dave Beeson, three eighteen South Poplar Street. I got here about five minutes late about the chicken people and they left, but uh we went through this for a number of years ago. You know, went on for a couple of years and we decided we didn't want chickens in here.
Right.
And uh at one time, we went out and polled neighborhoods. We just went through two neighborhoods. I mean, me and some other citizens. And we got over two hundred names on a petition saying they did not want chickens in the neighborhoods.
Right.
And this was out of Timber Ridge and Helmcrest only. I know we have a straw poll, it shows sixty percent, or sixty people say yes and thirty say no. Well, you can get that out of any bar, you know.
Right.
If you get everybody saying, yeah, I will go for, I'll sign that. But uh if you have chickens, then you gotta have a comfort pigs running around and you gotta have, we've had goats in town and we also had miniature horses in town. And I think those are farm animals and we usually, they call them farm animals because they belong on the farm. They don't belong in town. And uh I want to, wanted you to know, I don't think any of you folks were here when, when we went through this. Maybe Becky was working for the town, but they went through this for a long time to, and they finally decided to get rid of it. And I think uh, I think the numbers are against it are much larger than what you're seeing on this little straw poll. And I I would urge you to uh as you said, you're gonna table it and talk about it in two weeks. Well, I uh, I want to express that we have, we had citizens had went out and polled a couple of neighborhoods and the majority of the people do not want that.
Right.
Farm animals belong on the farm and uh that's about all I have to say about that.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you very much, folks.
Uh do we have any other public comment? Okay, thank you. Town council, uh Libby?
Um Joe, I didn't ask when you were talking, Main Street, I told you those lights were wonky on Main Street and they still are.
They are, um actually, if I notice now, there are two lights that stay on all the time.
Yeah.
All three of those lights on that side, on the west side and north of the tracks, they're having issues with them. And when the guy came out to work on them in the daytime, he said they were working fine. I thought he said probably the high led is set wrong and come back and look and let's see if they're going out. So I think what he's done is he's covered them, figured out what's wrong, fixed those two, they're priced as a high cover. The one in the middle is not working. He said the picture is bad and they had to work it out and see if that was.
Okay.
And they came back and looked at that picture.
Did they look at the one over in front of taxman?
Uh it's not in front of taxman, but it's one in the middle on that side.
Okay. Okay, because it's just dark. It's really dark. And I had a customer that came into the store and um she had her hand all, you know, in a brace. And I said, oh gosh, what happened? And she had fallen on Main Street and broke all the bones in her hand and her wrist. And um I don't want any more of that to happen.
Those lights have been a little bit of pain lately, keeping them functioning.
Yeah.
Several times on the power of the local, we are placing all these on the street projects. You should have them right so they're more efficient. LEDs that don't have a lot of malice and all the things.
That'll be good. That's all, I think.
I know.
I got another.
Maggie?
I just want to say that on the chickens, I actually went out and talked to five five of the neighbors around there. I got one, he wants to be a good neighbor, so he's not gonna be against them. I got one maybe and I got three, I got four no's, so.
Okay. Thank you.
I don't have anything.
I don't either. I'm trying.
Make a motion, we approve and sign vouchers.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Make a motion, we adjourn at seven thirty-six.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hey, we've got another one to sign. I don't think we turned in the um the actual second reading of the annexation.
Annexation?
We got the fiscal plan. That's what I was looking at when I asked him about that. We got the actual second part of that.
Yeah, sign that one. Keeps us from having to come back.
Thank you for catching that, brother. I'm gonna go when I get home and get a message. I have to come sign something.
I know, uh let's turn the bikes on.
Adam. I would like to s- do you have any plans on the addition behind?